I will call to order the Monday, April 18th meeting of the Verona Common Council. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we'll have the roll call. Ms. Lynch, please.
Alderman Charles.
Here.
Alderman McIlvery.
Here.
Alderman Ritt.
Here.
Alderman Solowitz.
Present.
Alderman Steiner.
Here.
Alderman Strike.
I am here.
And Alderman Touche.
Present.
And Alderman Manley is absent this evening.
But excused.
Thank you. We do have a quorum, so we will proceed. Next on the agenda, we have public comment. If there's anyone from the public that wishes to speak this evening, if they would please come forward to the podium. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak this evening? Anyone from the public that wishes to speak? Seeing none, we will move on. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes from the March 11th meeting of the Common Council. The minutes are included with your packet. What is your pleasure?
I was absent this evening.
So I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Charles, seconded by Mr. Touche, for the approval of minutes. Were there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the previous meeting? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Under Mayor's business this evening, I think I'll mention it early in the meeting rather than late in the meeting. We did have an election last week, and we have four individuals on the council tonight that will no longer be serving. This will be their last meeting on the council. So for those of you that have known me for a long time, I get emotional very easy, so this is not easy. I mentioned a little bit at Plan Commission the other night, and I sort of hate to do this, because when you start singling people out, you forget people, or you don't want to offend people. So this is no reflection on people that have served either on prior Plan Commissions or on the Common Council, but I think the four of you, that this is your last meeting, you're just, you're special people. You're really special people. Steve Redd, I mentioned this at Plan Commission the other night. I think you definitely were the leader on the Plan Commission. You served on the Plan Commission before I did. I had the opportunity, prior to being elected mayor in 2006, to fill in a couple times for John Volker, former Mayor John Volker, and I saw you as a leader immediately. And what I said Monday evening, and I mean this sincerely, is that when I drive around the city, when I take a look at new buildings that have been built, your fingerprint, your handprint is on each one of those buildings. And clearly, as a city, we've raised the bar, and you were definitely a big part of that. So Steve, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Evan, I think the thing that I really enjoyed with you is you asked a lot of questions. You served two years on the council, and maybe not so many questions during a meeting, but certainly a lot of questions either before or after. I think you really did your homework. You're very sincere about doing a great job, but never afraid to ask a question. That's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Clark, I don't know where to start. We've known each other for a long time. You were on the Plan Commission, you were on the council. I think with your background in construction and project management, you certainly brought a very welcome expertise to the Plan Commission and to the council. And again, you asked a lot of questions. Sometimes they were really difficult questions, but that's good. That's good, I think. In the end, and it's like I said about Mr. Ritt the other night at Plan Commission, because of that, we always ended up with a better project. And that's a good thing for the city, too. So thank you.
Thanks, it was my honor. Thank you.
Rick?
I think, I was thinking about this. I don't know of anyone who took their job more serious than you. With EMS, you took that job very seriously. You always kept the council, and me certainly, and the administrator, whoever the administrator was at that time, very apprised of what was going on at Verona. We appreciate that. That was very important for us. You did, you chaired the Personnel Committee, and you took that role very serious as well. I remember when I asked you to serve as Chair of the Personnel Committee, you indicated that you didn't really know, that you didn't think that that was really necessarily your expertise, but I think you just, you did a tremendous job. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been a privilege.
So not just on behalf of me, but on behalf of all the citizens of Verona, I want to thank you very much for the service to the city of Verona. It was an honor for us to work with you as well. So with that...
That concludes my business for this evening. We will move on then to the Administrator's Report. Mr. Burns, please.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to report on a few items that we have coming up. First, the organizational meeting of the Common Council is always held on the third Tuesday of the month. That'll be April the 16th. The start time for that meeting is going to be at 5:30 this year, rather than 7:00, which has been the traditional start time, but we will do that at 5:30 on the 16th. And then the next regular meeting of the Common Council will be at the normal time of 7:00 on April the 22nd. MSA is continuing to work on the downtown transportation and corridor study. We have a steering committee meeting scheduled for that project, the 19th, at 7:30 in the morning here at City Hall. The purpose of this meeting will be to review feedback from the public meeting and interviews with various stakeholders, and MSA is also going to be presenting drafts of three concept plans for the transportation improvements. The goal is also to prepare for another public meeting that would take place in May to look at those different concept plans, and then we'd be targeting a final public meeting in either June or July for the final concept plan before that's submitted to the Plan Commission and the City Council. We have been continuing to work with transportation improvements for the Epic Campus. AECOM has completed a traffic impact analysis looking at that area. We are planning a public informational meeting. We are planning to schedule that for the evening of Tuesday, April 23rd, unless there are any concerns with that date from members of the council. I think we'll proceed with setting that date and specify a location and time tomorrow so that we can get notice out for that meeting. Epic did come in for initial review at the April Plan Commission for a parking structure for Campus 4, as well as initial review of a replating and rezoning for potential purchase of property in the Meister subdivision. Those items would likely be coming back to Plan Commission in May, for the May meeting for a second review. This morning, we had our quarterly meeting with the Verona Area School District as part of the IDAC Committee. I just wanted to report that at this point, the school district is looking at approximately 56 to 58 additional enrollments for next year, and they are also doing different budget scenarios based on what's happening at the state budget right now. Coming up, we are planning to do a presentation for the State of the City at the Chamber All Member Meeting, which will be the morning of April the 25th. That'll likely be the mayor, myself, and Adam Sayer as the city planner presenting on behalf of the city. And then coming up in May, we have the Dane County Cities and Villages All Member, or Annual Meeting, which has been scheduled for May the 22nd, and I'd be available to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Burns? Seeing none, we will move on. Bill, thank you. Next, we have the Engineers' Report. Mr. Gunlock, please.
Thank you. Update on Well 5 Reservoir and Well House. The contractor has completed undercutting that building and placing structural fill. The reinforcement steel for the two sumps in the reservoir is in place, and the concrete should be poured tomorrow. Once those sumps are in place, they will finish placing the steel in the slab, and then that concrete pour will be made. Contractor has also completed the extension of the utilities to the building. Work is scheduled for completion the end of August. An update on Northern Lights Trail. The contractor for Epic has been reconstructing Northern Lights Trail in the vicinity of the farm campus, and now it is open to traffic. The underground parking garage and ramps that serve the farm campus are also open and in use, and landscaping along Northern Lights Trail and into median, in the area of the farm campus, will be taking place over the next couple of weeks. And finally, Cathedral Point Phase 3. Construction plans and documents for the construction of streets and utilities to serve an additional 32 lots in the Cathedral Point subdivision have been received and reviewed, and review comments have been forwarded to the developer's engineer. Based on their schedule, site grading would commence in May or June with completion of the work in September. That completes my report for this evening. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Are there any questions this evening for Mr. Gunlock? Mr. Ritt?
Not a question, but just a thanks, Bob. It's been a real pleasure. It's been an honor to work with you, and you certainly make this much easier to understand, and you make sure that the city understands what's going on with regard to the engineering projects, and it's appreciated. Thanks.
Thank you. It's also been an honor to serve with all of you.
Thank you. If there's no other questions or comments, we'll move on to Committee Reports. We'll begin with the Finance Committee. Mr. McIlvery, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under item 9A1, I'll make a motion to approve payment of the monthly bills in the amount of $714,482.08.
We have a motion by Mr. McIlvery. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ritt. Mr. McIlvery?
Thank you, Mr. Ritt. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the way of explanation, three of the larger items from this month's bill, the first being to the Bond Trust Services Corporation for our 2010B Build America Bonds. These were for refinancing of bonds and borrowings in 2010 for the general fund, the library, and the stormwater utility. Second, we have a $67,000 payment to the Metro Transit System, which is our first quarter 2013 investment partner share. As you are all aware, this is part of the Epic pass-through payment that is made to Metro for the bus ridership. And finally, we have the fourth quarter, or excuse me, second quarter operating apportionment for the Verona Fire District in the amount of $171,968.25.
You have heard the explanation of the major expenditures for the month. Are there any questions for the Finance Committee? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried, and the bills have been paid. Is there anything else from Finance?
No, sir.
Thank you, Mr. McIlvery. We'll move on to Public Works Sewer and Water Committee. Mr. McIlvery?
Thank you. Under item 9B1, I'll make a motion to approve a professional services agreement for the Lincoln Street reconstruction and water main replacement in an amount not to exceed $30,175.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. McIlvery, second by Mr. Strike. Mr. McIlvery?
Thank you, Mr. Strike. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. AECOM shall perform engineering services for the design and replacement of water main on Lincoln Street from approximately 250 feet north of William Street to the southernly end of Lincoln Street, approximately 2,150 total feet, and Oak Park, excuse me, Oak Court, which is approximately 200 feet. In addition, the work will include developing plans and specifications to reconstruct the existing street section and replacement of deficient curb and gutter. Total estimated fees for the design, survey, design services, and bidding services is not to exceed, as I said, $30,175.
You've heard the explanation, and it's included also in your Administrator's Report. Are there questions for the Finance Committee or for city staff? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. McIlvery?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under item 9B2, I'll make a motion to approve a professional services agreement with AECOM for design and improvements for the 18151 off-ramp expansion for Epic Lane in a not-to-exceed amount of $72,000.
We have a motion by Mr. McIlvery. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Solowitz. Mr. McIlvery?
Thank you, Mr. Solowitz. Mr. Mayor. AECOM shall perform engineering services for the design of the second lane on the 18151 off-ramp for Epic Lane, including traffic signal modifications on West Verona Avenue. In addition, this project will include the second lane on Epic Lane from West Verona Avenue to Northern Lights. The project shall be engineered and constructed to Wisconsin Department of Transportation standards. Epic shall be responsible for the total cost associated with this project. Again, Epic shall be responsible for the total cost associated with this project. We had a meeting with WISDOT on Thursday, April 4th, developing a scope of work for the project. Excuse me. AECOM will not have the agreement completed until Monday afternoon, which you now have the agreement in front of you. This was put out just before our Public Works session this evening. If you have any further questions, we do have Mr. Gunlock and Mr. Reader here who can answer specifics as to the conversation with WISDOT. It is a fairly involved document that they are requiring us to create.
You have heard the explanation from Mr. McIlvery. Are there questions or comments from the council members? Seeing no questions or comments, we have a motion before you. Agenda item B2, at a cost not to exceed $72,000. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. McIlvery, is there anything else from Public Works Sewer and Water Committee?
Yes, there is. I would like to take this opportunity to address the public in general, but more importantly, I'd like to address the four gentlemen that I've had the opportunity to serve on committee levels with. I know it was the will of the people that spoke the other day, but I want them to know that it is not a reflection, that I believe it's not a reflection of the work that you've done on the committee level. I can't tell you how much I have valued your service. I've had the opportunity to speak with you individually, but I don't think the city realizes at this point the wealth of wisdom, if you just look at the work experience of these four gentlemen. I don't think they realize the wealth of wisdom you have brought to the table. I can tell you personally, I've relied on each and every one of you at different occasions to not only question me, but inform me, highlight things that I may have missed. You guys all know I'm kind of a big-picture person, and I depend on a lot of you to pick out the details, and I am deeply saddened to lose you, and I'm deeply saddened for the city. That's not necessarily a reflection on the people who are coming in, but I know you, and I know the work you've done for this city, and I've greatly enjoyed building friendships with all of you. And I look forward to hearing from you in the future, and if you completely step away, you know I will be knocking on your doors, saying, "Where have you gone?" So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McIlvery, for those comments, and what I thought I would do is, under announcements this evening, I wanted to say what I said under the Mayor's business, but I thought it'd be more appropriate when we get closer to the end of the meeting, if there's any additional comments. So not that you did anything wrong, that's certainly very acceptable.
These gentlemen served with me on committees, so I thought it appropriate at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on then, next to Public Safety and Welfare Committee. Mr. Charles, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under item 9 Charlie 1, we have discussion possible action regarding ordinance 13-824, amending Chapter 7 of Section 7, and repealing Chapters 9 and 14 of Section 7 of the City of Verona Court of Ordinances, Licensing, and Regulation Regarding Street Use Permits and Special Events. Effectively, what this ordinance does is it rounds up several scattered pieces of our ordinances regarding special events, street use permits, and the like, brings them into one cohesive regulation, because really, these all do have a lot of commonalities among them, so it made sense to streamline the process a little bit here. One amendment from what was published in your packet, if you look at item K towards the bottom of page 4, regarding neighborhood events, regarding petitioning the residence of a street that would be impacted by an event, the second sentence of that item K is amended to read, "The petition shall be signed by adult residents from not less than 75% of the households on the portion of the street designated for the proposed use." The reason we made this amendment is because it's really not feasible for us to know exactly how many adults are living along a stretch of street, but we can tell how many households there are, and if we get one adult representative from each household, or 75% of them anyways, that's easily quantifiable and is meaningful for the intent of this ordinance. So I will make a motion to approve ordinance 13-824 as amended.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Charles, second by Mr. Touche, to approve the ordinance as revised, as Mr. Charles outlined it. Are there any questions for the committee or for city staff? Are there any questions? And Bill and Cammy, did you make sure you got that language, or that we get that language? Do we have it? Okay. All right. Seeing no questions, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Charles?
Okay. Item 9 Charlie 2 is regarding ordinance 13-825, amending Chapter 2 of Section 7 of the City of Verona Court of Ordinances, Licensing, and Regulation Regarding Fermented Malt Beverages and Intoxicating Liquor. The purpose of this amendment is really a bit of a procedural cleanup, again, a bit of streamlining, and also, towards the end, specifically the Section 7-2-19 portion takes care of a number of the conditions that we've encountered in recent years regarding incomplete applications, timeliness of applications, and other circumstances, which have created a bit of a conditioning issue when we've gone to renew licenses. We're basically just putting those up front rather than on the back end at this point. So, oh, and then one minor amendment to this, there are some grammatical items that Ms. Lynch would also like to clean up within this ordinance, not affecting the meaning of the text, but just things like apostrophe placements and stuff like that, just to mop up as she goes. So I will make a motion to approve ordinance 13-825 as amended.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Charles, seconded by Mr. Touche. You've heard the explanation. Are there any further questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, the motion is to approve the ordinance as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Anything else from Public Safety and Welfare Committee?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Charles. Agenda item number 10 under Old Business. I'm going to let Bill explain this, but there was a little concern both on Bill and on my part after the meeting last time, that perhaps we didn't have a proper quorum, and we wanted to make sure that any actions that we were taking were legal. But Bill, if you would, please provide the background.
Yeah. At the March 11th, 2013 council meeting, there were five older persons present, as well as the mayor, and Wisconsin statutes and city ordinances set a quorum at 2/3 of the member of the council. They also specify that the mayor shall be considered as a member of the council. However, in discussing this with the city attorney following the meeting, there is a concern that there should be six older persons present, not counting the mayor, in order to be clear that the quorum requirements have been met. The city attorney's advice was that at the next available meeting, which is tonight, that there just be a single motion taken to affirm the actions of the March 11th council meeting, just to avoid any doubt about the proper procedure of being followed for those items.
Mr. Ritt?
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I'll move to affirm the actions taken at the March 11th, 2013 Common Council meetings.
We have a motion by Mr. Ritt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Solowitz. Are there any questions after the explanation? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. And Bill, would you also provide the background under New Business? Agenda item 111, please.
Yes. Earlier this year, the city council had approved agreements with the town of Verona that would dissolve the Verona Fire Department effective January 1, 2014, and would also provide service to the town of Verona through a city fire department that would be established. And under Wisconsin statutes, the Police and Fire Commission has the authority for the appointing of the chief of a fire department, as well as for establishing eligibility lists from which the fire chief would select subordinates for that department. And in order to begin the process of setting up a city fire department effective for January 1 of next year, the proposed item would be to direct the Police and Fire Commission to begin the process for the selection of the fire chief. The mayor and I had a brief discussion with the president of the Police and Fire Commission. They are prepared to schedule a meeting on April 18th to begin discussions of that process, but since we are setting up a city department and a city position, we felt that it would be appropriate for the council to authorize the Police and Fire Commission to start that process. Police and Fire Commission would then be reporting back on a proposed position description and compensation for that chief position.
It's a little bit of a different process than what we've had before. Now that it will become a city department, we need to follow the state statutes as it relates to a Police and Fire Commission. So we just wanted to make sure that we're getting that ball rolling, because we cannot wait until January 1st for us to, for us, for the Police and Fire Commission to hire a chief, and the chief immediately to have full-time staff working for him or her. So we need to get that process going, and that's the reason that we put it on the agenda this evening. So I'll open it up if there's any questions first, and then if there aren't, or if there are, then we could proceed with action. But that is the reason that it's on the agenda and before you this evening. Any thoughts or potential action? Mr. McIlvery?
Well, at this time, I'll make a motion to authorize the actions, or excuse me, make a motion to authorize the Police and Fire Commission to begin process for hiring fire chief for the City of Verona Fire Department.
We have a motion by Mr. McIlvery. Is there a second?
Second.
Of Mr. Touche. Second by Mr. Touche. Are there questions on the motion? Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Next, we have approval of operator licenses. Ms. Lynch, please.
We have three licenses this evening from Mitchell Williams, Jill Howard, and Justin Sutter.
Move approval.
Yep. Motion by Mr. Charles, seconded by Mr. Touche. Are there any questions on the operator's license applications? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. We are on to announcements for this evening. Mr. Steiner?
Thanks, Mayor. We want to wish many happy retirement years to Gary Seis from the Public Works Department. He served the city for 22 years, and we had a little get-together last Friday afternoon to send him into the retirement pasture. He's been a very dedicated employee, and I just wanted to say thanks to him. Tomorrow night, Tuesday, the senior commission meeting has been canceled, and Diana Lanaville sends thank yous to Mr. Touche and Mr. Strike for their service on that commission. Our VACT has a great, wonderful musical coming up this week, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, called Logically Blonde. It is a fast-moving musical. Tickets may be purchased at VACT.org, or you can call them on the phone, 845-VACT. And next week, Wednesday, the 17th, the Verona Historical Society will meet at 3:00 PM at the Senior Center. You're all welcome to attend. It's a growing little society, and we have wrapped up our church presentations, but we're looking at possibly inviting the pop-up churches, the new ones that have come to our city the last three, four, or five years, to come in and let us know what kind of history they're building. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Any additional announcements or comments this evening? Mr. Strike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The EMS at Verona meeting has been moved from the 18th to this Wednesday here in Verona at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Mr. Charles?
First of all, it smells like engine coolant in here for some reason. It makes me wonder, I don't know if the air handler and the generator up on the roof are near each other. Mr. Burns, if you know who to send to scope that, something's not right somewhere, so... As long as I was on my mind.
Well, see, the chief's out there.
I wrote a note here and pulled the guys next to me to see if I was just imagining things or not, and they agreed, so something's up somewhere. At any rate, I just, I just wanted to thank Mr. Solowitz, Mr. Strike, Mr. Touche, Mr. Ritt, being among those who have taught me a lot about serving here. I spent about a year before I was appointed to anything, just sitting in on meetings, just learning how things go here, and just being interested in what happens. And then it was probably about a year and a half, almost two years, of just coming down here for meetings before I ran for office, and I felt I had a pretty good education from watching all of you and interacting with you, and of course, Mr. Eifert before Evan, Mr. Harwood before me. A lot of mentoring that happened here, and I appreciate that. You guys have done well for your city, and I couldn't agree with the mayor's points earlier more. So, thank you very much for your service. I will miss serving with you, and I hope I have an opportunity to do so again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Charles.
Thanks, Charlie.
Any additional comments? No additional comments? Mr. Solowitz?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Solowitz, second by Mr. Ritt, to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.